Thank you. All right, we would like to welcome you to the South Salt Lake City Council Work Meeting. It is Wednesday, March twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. The time is six fifteen P. M. My name is Sharla Bynum, and I will be conducting. And we'd like to welcome all council. Do we have council member Sanchez online? And council member Sanchez is online with us. And city staff and anyone else who's here to view and people watching us online. We have four matters for discussion. We will go ahead and start with our first matter. And I will turn the time over to the mayor for an appointment.
Good evening, council. Um, for your consideration tonight, I have a civilian review board member, an alternate. For your consideration, you his. Brandon DeGraffin Reed, and he is here this evening. If you have any questions for him. His resume is in your Dropbox.
Wonderful. Anyone have any questions? All right, we will take final action on this during the regular work meeting. Thank you, Mayor. All right, we'll move on to ethics training. And we'll turn the time over to Josh, our favorite time of the year, Josh.
I didn't know you were such a good liar. See if we can get this to show up. As you know, I really love doing this presentation, so much so that I made Ariel do it last year. I get it back, I guess. So we're going to talk about this. There are a few things that are updated. That you may have noticed. And we'll talk about that, we'll point those out, but let's get into it. As soon as we get this presentation showing up, we'll. Start rolling. I'm gonna, I'm gonna start it off. So. The. Applicable laws that we're talking about, Utah Municipal Ethics and Employee, or excuse me, Officers and Employees Ethics Act, the Public Officers and Employees Ethics Act. So we're talking about Title Ten of State Code, Title Sixty-seven of State Code. We also have some offenses that might be listed in the, in Title Seventy-six, which is under offenses against the administration of government that we'll discuss. I don't have specific examples from every single code that's applicable to you. So just keep in mind that if you have a question or concern that comes up at any point, reach out to me, and we can talk through it and look at the code language and whatever. But we're going to hit on some of the, the main ones, and we're going to talk through that.
All right, and Josh, I'm gonna let, I'm gonna just make it clear. We're gonna let Josh present the whole presentation, and if you have questions, please jot them down. We'll have some time at the end.
Yeah, and I'm gonna try and make this as quick as possible, knowing that we have other items, and I could probably talk about this way too long, so. Starting with the municipal officers and employees Ethics Act, I always do that. Ethics gets swapped with employees. It's in Title Ten. The purpose is to establish standards of conduct for elected officials, officers, employees, to require them to disclose actual or potential conflicts of interest between their public duties and their personal interests in business and other things that happen in your life. And the intent is to build transparency and trust in the government. Who does it apply to? As I said before, elected officials, appointed officers, so including board members, et cetera, and all municipal employees. To start, we'll talk, we'll get into. Something that comes from the Utah Public Officers and Employees Ethics Act, which is in state Title Sixty-seven. But this also intersects with a lot of other areas of the code that you guys deal with. In your position as elected officials, you get access to sensitive information. You can't turn around and use that for your personal gain or for the personal gain of somebody else that you may know could use that information. So we might have a closed-door meeting that talks about X. You know, so-and-so really needs that information, or that it could benefit them, or it could benefit you personally. You can't use that for that purpose, that's illegal. And it could get you in a lot of trouble, so avoid that. Along those lines, inappropriately using, inappropriately using your official position to award bids to your own company, for example. We've, we've had instances of that happening in Utah in recent years at the state level. Special request for fee waivers, influence, to influence investigations or enforcement, or to use your title in a personal unrelated business interaction to get some benefit to you. Again. Taking a gift or something else that would tend to influence your decision as an elected official. That's inappropriate and illegal. There are some exceptions to that. We've talked about in the past. You should all be very well aware of those. Occasional non pecuniary gifts of fifty dollars or less, totally acceptable. If it's a political campaign contribution, that, that's, that's fine. A publicly presented service award, which is something that's come up recently, that may be something that may exceed fifty dollars for the cost of a plaque or a trophy or something. You don't have to worry about that. That's, it's in the public, everybody knows and understands what it's for, and it's not going to cause any concerns or, or run afoul of the statute, so. But, you know, on the other hand, if you're getting a loan at substantially better rates than fair market value just because of your position, right, that's going to run afoul of your ethical obligations. Other obvious concerns, bribery, which are very direct requests for you to do something in exchange for a favor on the other end. And that would still be a crime even if you didn't actually follow through, or if the other person didn't actually follow through, right? So it could still be a crime even if it's not completed. So that's something to keep in mind if you ever in that situation. Someone offers you a bribe, you should report that immediately. Don't engage in that conversation or go down that line of, of communication. So. Public perception is really, really important in your role. How the public perceives your actions and what you do is, is paramount. And it's really important that you understand, for example, like, meeting alone with someone who you are regulating as an elected official or who you may have to vote on their plan or proposal in the future. It's not a good idea based on public perception, because they will, you know, members of the public are gonna find out you had that meeting. They're gonna assume, you know, nefarious intent that you sold your vote, that you've done something else improper. So the suggestion from staff is have a member of staff that's appropriate to that meeting with you, or just don't meet with the individual at all. But if you have to, or you think it's appropriate, bring someone from staff along or multiple people. So number one, you have witnesses, and nobody else can come back and say like, oh, actually, I know this happened. When you've got people to rebut that, and they, they can help balance that conversation, so you don't run into trouble there. Disclosures regarding business transactions. You can't receive compensation to assist a person or a business in a transaction with the city. So this would come a lot into play with like a planning commission for a developer that's gonna come in front of the planning commission, but it would happen for you as well. If in your day job you were advising developers or advising anybody that might come for, in front of the council and ask for a zone change or a code change or anything else that you would have to act on officially, you, you can't act in that capacity unless you disclose it. And your rules would require you to not participate in that, in that vote or consideration or discussion. And so that's something to keep in mind. If you're ever in that situation. Recuse yourself from the council action and disclose to everybody, make sure. So that you're gonna hear that a lot. Disclose anytime you have concern, just bring it up, talk about it. Get it out in the open. Transparency is key. So we'll talk about disclosures and what we're required to do on a regular basis. As I mentioned at the beginning, some of these reporting requirements have changed significantly. Councilmember the Wolf significantly since you were on the council last, especially because starting last, this January, so a couple months ago, you now have to file an annual disclosure form, and it has to include several items. And we're actually gonna have to update the form that you did sign in, in January. There's, there's a few more things that need to be added to that form that we'll cover real quick. That has to be filed between January first and January thirty-first every year. The recorder has to post it on the city's website. And if you don't do that timely, that could end up as a criminal charge against you and a civil fine of a hundred dollars, so for what that's worth. I don't think anybody's interested in that route on either side of the conversation. So the statement that you have to file annually needs to disclose the following. And it's a lot. There's a few slides on this information, so, you know, if you're following along from your, your drive. And pay attention to this, because we're gonna have to update the form, so you guys keep that in mind. Who your current employer is and any previous employer during the preceding year with a brief description of your job, title, occupation, your roles. If you were the owner of any entity. You have to put the name of the entity and the description of the business activity and the position held. That's regardless of. You know, whether you actually made any money, right, which does happen, right? Other things that need to be included. The name, position, title, and a brief description of the business conducted for any individual or entity who paid to you at a minimum of five thousand dollars of income during the preceding year. So if you had a side job and you got at least five thousand dollars from that, you've got to disclose that. It's less than five thousand dollars, the statute doesn't require disclosure. But there, you'll see later in the, in the code, there may be a reason that you want to disclose that. That's, that would be an individual decision, but five thousand dollars or more you have to disclose. Also stocks, five thousand dollars or more during the preceding year. That would exclude funds managed by third-party or investment accounts and mutual funds. So you're, you know, you're, if you work for the, the, the state or you're in the retirement system or any other way that you've got those funds managed by a third-party, you don't have to disclose those. But if you're individually investing and doing those things and controlling that yourself, five thousand dollars or more in stocks, you have to disclose that. Any paid leadership position that's not previously listed or any paid or unpaid position on a board of directors. So if you sit on a board of directors, regardless of pay, you're gonna have to disclose that on your form. This will all be on the form as we update it. And it's, it's just important that I point this out. Because we have to get some, it's just a lot more, right? So. The name of your, your spouse, if, if you have a spouse, and any adult in your, in your home who's not related to you by blood or marriage. You have to list that on the disclosure as well. Again, your spouse's employer currently, or if they had any employers during the previous year that weren't disclosed. Same for the unrelated adult, if you have one. So obviously, as I've looked around at other cities, I see disclosures that will include like, oh, my mother lives. You don't have to list that your mother lives with you, or, you know, that your adult children live with you or anything else like that. It's unrelated adults. So, and then there's, like I said, optional disclosure. So if we go back to any of these examples, it's below five thousand dollars, but you think, hey, it's kind of relevant. I'd like to disclose it anyway. That's up to you. Including real property ownership. Other conflicts, just the same ones that we've talked about in the past and that you already disclose as they come up, because those disclosures are annual between January first and thirty-first. There may be things that happen during the year, so as they come up, disclose them. And there's timelines for that. Same thing, business interest, as it comes up, you've got to disclose it. And for that, a substantial interest, like if you just have an interest in a business, ten percent interest by, by you, your spouse, or a minor child. You just gotta disclose that, and you gotta keep that updated. Going through this quickly, so as we get to the end, please, we'll go back through anything, especially because we have the slides up on the screen, but just, you know, and, and you can stop me, it's okay. I am just trying to get through this so that we have time to talk about the other things. You wanna, again, investment or personal disclosures, we kind of talked about that. So timing of disclosures, as we said, there's the annual disclosure. Any disclosures upon your election or appointment, when the, the nature of the conflict changes or in case of receiving compensation for assisting a person or entity in a transaction, at least ten days before the contract date or ten days before receipt of the compensation, whichever is earlier. So if you know down the line, I'm gonna get compensation for a certain thing, you can, you can disclose that. Pay attention to what's required as far as disclosures in your council rules. Rules eleven and twelve specifically, those have been updated within the last sixteen months or so, but so keep that in mind. Accepting employment, so we're kind of moving on from disclosures now to other types of conflicts. You cannot accept employment that would may require you or induce you to properly disclose controlled information. We talked about it a little bit before, but if your job is solely going to require you or really, really entice you to disclose information that you get on a regular basis as an elected official, you can't, you can't take that position. If it will impair your independence or judgment in the performance of your public duties or interfere with your ethical performance of your public duties. Again, when in doubt, just disclose it. You, you need to disclose. Be open, be transparent about this. If you see someone else and, on the council or as a board member of another board, and you're concerned about that, don't call them out publicly. Let's talk about it internally and figure out if there really is a concern. So bring your concerns to me, we can figure out how to deal with that. It's not really appropriate for you to, you know, in your council comments, for example, get up and say, well, I know so-and-so is, whatever. So. We can handle that in a more appropriate manner, I think, in a more professional manner. And that's, that's the best way. Because there may be a difference between what you feel is right or ethical and what the law actually requires. Just keep that in mind. Enforcement is mostly self-regulating, but there are other bodies that do enforce. Some may end up as crimes, so it may end up as criminal enforcement, which would likely come through a different agency. Attorney General's Office is most commonly the way that happens. There is the political subdivisions Ethics Review Commission, which is a route that could potentially recommend enforcement. Some criminal offenses that are ethics violations would require removal from office or for employees' removal from employment. And some might even require forfeiture of retirement benefits. So now that it's working, we're at the very last slide. And you can see the, the list here, criminal sanctions on the left-hand side. And then sort of disclosures on the right-hand side. Things that you just need to be, be aware of if you're concerned, or if you just, you know, if the hair's in the back, you're in that kind of tingling, you're not really sure. Reach out, it's okay, disclose, let's talk about it internally, and we'll figure out if it's the right thing. And then if something comes up on the agenda that you didn't realize was a conflict, let's, let's talk about that. And, and maybe you disclose that publicly, and that's okay, and, and we'll, we'll navigate that. You know, the goal here is to be as transparent as possible and to protect everybody. But, you know, that's kind of what we want, and so let's take any questions if anybody has them.
Thank you, Josh. Anyone have any questions? All right. We will go ahead and move on, appreciate your time. We will go to item number three, emergency management training, and we will have Yasmin Kamana.
I know I have been up here a handful of times recently, so thank you for having me back. Today, I wanted to talk a little bit about roles and responsibilities of the council during an emergency. So over the last couple of months, we've really focused on both the National Incident Management System and the Incident Command System, which essentially are how the federal government, states, counties, and most local governments respond to emergencies and disasters. They let us know how to prepare and how to respond to those disasters. So today, I want to talk a little bit more localized of what our response looks like and specifically what y'all's response looks like. So we're gonna cover a little bit of city and state code. The South Salt Lake Policy Team, city council roles and responsibilities, and then our conclusion. So it's also like municipal code two point zero five point zero two zero, the mayor powers and duties. When an emergency happens, the mayor has two major things she can do. One is declare a disaster, and when she declares a disaster, it is effective when it is disseminated to the public, and there's a procedure that she works through and ensures that that dissemination is clear. Two, she has the authority to issue orders to maintain a peace and order in the city. So we'll walk through a quick example of what that could look like. We have a massive train yard in our city, Roper Train Yard. If there was a hazmat event there, the mayor is able to declare a disaster. And in that disaster, if we needed to evacuate the area, she has the authority to close down nearby shops and set a curfew in the area to protect public safety of individuals and of first responders. So when we think about disasters, we think about the start of them, we don't always think about the end of them. But when it comes to the end of a disaster, whether that's hours, weeks, rather, days, weeks, hopefully not years, but we have seen years. An emergency declaration can be expired in three ways or terminated in three ways. So one, the mayor can terminate that declaration. Two, the council can decide to terminate a declaration by a majority vote. And then three, thirty days after declaration has been declared, the council may choose to extend that declaration or may choose to terminate that declaration. So those are the three ways that a declaration can end once it is begun. So when it comes to an emergency and the line of succession for the mayor, if for some reason the mayor is unavailable, the chief of staff would take her spot. If chief of staff is absent and unavailable, then chair of legislative body, Sharla, that would be you, would take over. And if for some reason you are absent or unavailable, that would be Josh Collins, chief law enforcement officer. When it comes to an emergency, we have a process that emergency starts. And then there's always a little bit of confusion. So we have what's called the South Salt Lake Policy Group that activates. And during this activation, this group helps prioritize resources, provide guidance, and provide communications to both first responders and anyone who's responding to that emergency or needs to be notified of said emergency. The list on the right is the group that is made up of the policy group, and they help support and coordinate big decisions during an emergency. So I kind of want to walk through what this looks like. An emergency takes place. Once the policy group is notified, they activate what's called our Emergency Operations Center, which I talked a little bit about, and our Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. If those things are activated, that means that there's probably a fairly large disaster happening in our city. At that point, notifications go out to how we're responding and what our structure looks like to local organizations, to county, to partners, and then to you all. Upon those notifications, what that looks like for you all is, A, keeping your constituents and your community abreast of the information we're sharing. Most of the after-action reports and the trainings I've been a part of, as well as the exercises. Number one tends to be communication flow was, there was miscommunications. Things got missed or things were not clear. And so when communications are shared, we want to make sure that we're sharing the same message and the same information, so everybody's on the same page, both from the leadership side of the emergency down to our community members who understand what they need to do, if they need to take action or not take action. So ways that you all communicate with your constituents and with your community, social media, phone calls, door-to-door, you know what's best. So however you can do that is ideal. And then for media presence, so when an emergency occurs, oftentimes there are press conferences. And press conferences will have different experts in the area or community members talk about what's happening. And so we'll be getting with our communications team and giving everyone talking points about pieces to cover, to help whether it's calming, calming the public or giving them information if there's evacuations or water boil advisories, whatever the information is. If media approaches you prior to you having any information to share with them from us, direct them to our communications team. And if, if you are being notified about an emergency from the media, that most likely means you've not been notified by the policy team yet. But when an emergency happens, things take off a little bit slowly. So we will be reaching out. If you have questions, reach out to the mayor, reach out to Josh. But make sure that, again, we're sharing a unified message and that you can point them to our communications team, who will be able to either share information or say, hey, we're still gathering the facts, we'll get back with you. Your additional role and responsibility when there is an emergency is to call emergency meetings. And so we saw that a little bit during the pandemic. I know I was not here, but when there are policies or codes that need to be looked at or changed, you are able to call an emergency meeting during that time or going back to terminating a declaration. You can also terminate a declaration during an emergency meeting. Three ways to get a little bit more involved with emergency management within the city. So one, we completed our Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan last year. This is a link if you all are interested in looking at that plan. But it really outlines how the city responds to an emergency very high level. Who's in charge of notifications? At what point are people notified? And how does that whole process work? Two, I don't know if you all have heard about our CERT program, but it's called Community Emergency Response Team. This is a program run by emergency management and a local volunteer, Rick Farrell. We, or he really teaches basic first aid and skills to respond that would help you respond during an emergency. So how to use a fire extinguisher is always really a popular, light search and rescue, first aid. And whether that's you being in a car accident, your neighbor being in a car accident, the massive earthquake, all of those skills are there in that training. So if you're interested, please let me know. You can also take a virtual training online, and if you want hands-on practice, come find me. And then last but not least, making sure, A, that you are prepared for an emergency, but also you're checking in on your neighbors, your community. Do they have a plan? Do they know how they'll talk to their loved ones if the phone lines are out? Do they know how they'll move around the city or where there are meeting places for their families? Thinking about what their plan is, are they able to survive for ninety-six hours if that massive earthquake does come? It'll be a minimum of ninety-six hours before help is even able to get to this area, and they're going to go to the worst-off areas. So if we are not in one of the worst-off areas, help's not coming our way immediately. Talking to your community about their preparedness plans. And if you need information or resources or anything like that, please feel free to reach out to me, email, phone, I'm available. And I'll leave you all with this. Preparedness is the fastest way to recovery. The more that we can prepare now, the fastest, faster we'll be able to recover. And although it might seem simple, thinking about throwing a dinner party, right? The more that you prepare and you cook your dishes beforehand, you do your dishes beforehand. All you have to do when you clean up is load that dishwasher and you're done. But if you are waiting to the last minute, it's a little bit more hectic, there's a lot more recovery in there. So just think about that piece and how we can all prepare as a city a little bit more. So thank you for your time. Is there any questions I can answer? I know I go through these pretty quickly.
Any questions? We appreciate it, that's, it's very clear what our role is, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
We will move on to item four. We have a resolution of the South Salt Lake City Council confirming its review of the two thousand and twenty-five municipal wastewater planning program. We'll invite Craig up.
You know it's a good meeting when you start with ethics and end with wastewater.
You know what? Hand thought of that, thank you.
So this is, I'm hoping everybody knows Corby. Corby oversees our wastewater. Wastewater sewer are the same thing, we just kind of use those interchangeably. Just make sure you understand what we're talking about. And so annually, we do this municipal wastewater planning program survey. It's really designed for three real reasons. One's funding through our budgetary process, but also if we go to get low-interest loans for the Division of Water Quality Board, we're required to do this. Two, make sure that we're planning effectively for our wastewater collection system. And then third, so that you guys, the council, gets an opportunity to see this, and that we're not coming with you with emergency or disaster. and that we're not coming with you with emergency or disastrous problems. So hopefully you've all had a, an opportunity to take a look at that. There's really two main parts to the survey, one's the technical aspect, that is about the collection system and the second is the financial section. And our finance department, Crystal, provides all that, those numbers for us, so we really appreciate her help. Um, I don't really, unless you want me to go through every part of this, I'm hoping you read it. I just wanna point out a couple of things and it's down on the capital improvement portion. When we put this in, it's a Google Doc that goes straight to the state and then it goes into, captures the information in, um, an Excel spreadsheet. But we don't have the ability to change this once we submit it. And when we submitted the capital projects, you'll notice seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen and twenty million dollars. That should be one point seven, one point eight, one point nine, so you're not really thrown for a loop there, seventeen's a lot, so one point seven is a lot better. It's fixed on the state side, we just didn't have the ability to fix it on the survey portion. So again, the whole reason for this is for you to review, we have the resolution that you can approve and then we send that to the state for compliance. That's really all, so if you have any questions.
Any questions for Craig? Thank you, we appreciate all the work you're doing in wastewater and you ended our meeting great, so.
Perfect, thanks.
All right, with that, we will adjourn and we will start our regular meeting at seven o'clock, thank you, everyone.